I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. Pastor Tony Pierce is here with us today. He is from the First Baptist Church of Fountain Hills.
Mayor, Council. This being the last time I'll get to pray for this particular group and for you, Mayor, I want to say on behalf of First Baptist Church and the members that are there, you're prayed for weekly, and your work is appreciated. So we want you guys to know that we lift you up that way. So can we pray together?
Thank you.
Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for your love and your mercy. I thank you for your hand upon us, and I thank you for your direction that you offered to us. And I pray you give us ears to hear what you have for us, and give us your heart for each other. Father, your greatest command was that we would love one another. So I pray that you would teach us how to love better. And I pray that you'd bring unity into our community, into our homes, in every aspect of our life. I thank you for our mayor. Lord, thank you for her service through the years. I pray you bless her as she moves on to a new season of life. I pray for our new mayor. I lift her up and pray, Lord, that you'll guide her steps, give her wisdom, show her your way as she leads, as she serves. Father, I thank you for our council. And those who will be leaving, we lift up and again, thank you for their service. And those who are coming in, we pray your blessing upon them. And we ask you always, Lord, to bless this wonderful community called Fountain Hills. Bless our state. Bless our country. Lord, thank you for your grace, your mercy that's always poured out to us. And only through your son we pray these things, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Tony. Roll call, please, Liz.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Brown.
Brown still? Okay, sorry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Brown's still around.
Councilmember Legay.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
All right, you stole my thunder just a little bit. At this time, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Brown for serving as Vice Mayor. He served for a little bit longer than his usual, the term for Vice Mayor, and he's done an extraordinary job as Vice Mayor. I've depended on him a great deal throughout the time that he's been Vice Mayor. And we are now timed to pass it on. So our new Vice Mayor, as of right now, will be Councilman Art Tolles.
Thank you.
And now we switch the... Did you want to switch?
Switch the nameplates.
Actually, I already did because I...
Oh, you did. Okay, so we've all... Pretend we just switched the nameplates. Either of you want to say anything? No? You want to say something?
It's an honor to serve you and our community. Thank you.
Great, okay. He's a man of few words. All right, we have two proclamations. The first is to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And as you notice, we are all wearing purple, something purple. And we've also, if you noticed at night, we are now lighting up the dome itself in purple. And I think that's something really extraordinary that we've done. We used to just put lights up, but it really makes a profound statement. So I want to thank our staff for coming up with that idea. And as you all leave, it'll be lit up, so please take a look at it. So we start with that proclamation. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security; and whereas for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings; and whereas tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear; whereas women, men, young children, and the elderly are all counted among the victims of domestic violence; whereas physical injury and deaths occur and emotional scars are often permanent; whereas law enforcement officials, shelters, hotline services, healthcare providers, the clergy, and concerned citizens are helping in the effort to end domestic violence; whereas we must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals, applaud their efforts, and increase public understanding of this important problem; and whereas the town council approved Resolution 2013-44 on August 15, 2013, expressing support for the Start By Believing Campaign through the End Violence Against Women International Organization. Now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fountain Hills and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting community efforts in working towards its end. The next is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Fountain Hills; whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire; whereas U.S. home fires result in 2,735 civilian deaths in 2016, representing the majority fire deaths; whereas U.S. fire departments responded to 3,000, 352,000 home fires in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association; and the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to U.S. fire departments was 10 percent higher in 2016 than in 2080. Whereas Fountain Hills residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards; whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and Fountain Hills residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home; whereas Fountain Hills residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place; whereas Fountain Hills residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire; whereas Fountain Hills first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education; whereas Fountain Hills residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes; whereas in 2018, Fire Prevention Month theme is Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware. Fire can happen anywhere. Effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Fire Prevention Month throughout Fountain Hills. I urge all Fountain Hills to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Fountain Hills Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Month 2018. And of course, we always thank our fire department for the great service that they give our community. Thank you very much. All right, we have called to the public. Anybody?
No.
Nope? Okay, we go on to consent agenda. We have four, and I need a motion to approve as written.
Come on.
And a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Aye.
Councilmember Legay.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter.
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye. Go ahead to our regular agenda. The first is consideration of reappointing of a youth commissioner to Community Services Advisory Commission. Grady?
I'll go ahead and call on the Community Services Director just to make a few remarks before we recognize the appointment.
All right. As the chair for this commission, we do entertain one youth member. Actually, when I first joined the town, we did not have a youth member serving. So Hayden Arnold joined us last year for his first year of appointment and has been asked to join us again for this coming year. They do serve as a, in a school year term, so Hayden would join us for the first meeting in October coming up and serve through the end of May in 2019. We're excited to have him back as part of our commission.
Okay. And I will nominate Hayden Arnold to be our youth commissioner to Community Services Advisory Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Coming forward.
Okay. Is Hayden here?
Yeah, Hayden's here.
Yeah, there you are. Come say a few words. Oh, just say hello. All right. We really appreciate you volunteering. We really appreciate you being our youth commissioner. And please take that position, speak up on the commission, and you are now the representative of all your youth all over Fountain Hills. Okay? All right. Thank you. All right, four items, 8B and 8C. There will be one staff report, and public input for 8C is taken during 8B, the public hearing. So we'll start with 8B, Public Hearing to Receive Comments on Ordinance 1811, a proposed text amendment to Section 1.12, Section 5.10A. Section 5.10B, Section 10.9, and the addition of Section 5.10C in the Town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance to provide development standards for utilizing cantilevers on single-family residential lots or parcels with slopes equal to or greater than 30 percent. This is case number Z2018-03. With that, I open public hearing. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you probably looks a little bit familiar. Roughly about 18 months ago, we had a council retreat where we had some public policy discussions. This was one of the items that was discussed. It was brought up at the time by Councilmember Dennis. We had a number of other items that were added, and the council agreed that these were considered high enough level of public policies that they would need to go and staff would go and research them further and then push them along through the process. A year ago, this particular item on the hillside development standards was adopted, but didn't quite reach the goal of what the council had discussed in the council retreat. So staff went ahead and brought this to P&amp;Z to address this at the last P&amp;Z meeting. And that is, they affirmed this, this new change, and this is what is before you tonight. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our senior planner, Marissa Moore, who's going to give a staff report on this item so that you fully understand what it means and what impact it will have on the community.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Tolles, congratulations, and other council people. Okay, so what is before you is looking at cantilever design standards. Essentially, this is looking at design. It's an aesthetics regulation because we can kind of engineer anything to look like anything. This is to look at if it fits in with the character of the community and the aesthetics that the community may want to see or not see. Primarily, we're asking for your direction and input because it is very subjective. I also do want to add at the front end here that there was a request from our specific statistics on which lots have different types of slopes and which lots are in HOAs and NPOAs and subjected to maybe some kind of design review versus not. I did do the best I could to get those numbers from MAG and using staff, and I'll get to those later in the report, but I do have as best as I could get at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so because of the steepness of the slopes in town, which is what this is looking at, slopes that average 30 percent or more when measured from the road down, that's the type of lot that this would be looking at as a base to even be qualified for these standards. It has to have an average slope of 30 percent or more going down from the road. Right now, we have in an ordinance that you can move the... If you have this 30 percent slope or more on average down from the road, you can move the structure 10 feet with, from within the front property line. And this is to help alleviate some of the requirement from having to go further down. There's issues with getting the driveway to the house and so forth, so it was intended to help with that element of developing on steep slopes. When we're originally looking at this, doing cantilever designs, one of the things planners do is we look at the extremes because we want to make sure that these things aren't necessarily built. We want to tweak our regulations so that something like this doesn't come across. I think we can probably all be in agreement that this isn't very attractive. But if you look at the quality of the houses, it could be affordable to someone. And if we have regulations, you know, when you're in the house, you have the views, it could be a possibility. So we want to take into consideration what we don't want to see. On the other end of the spectrum is something like this that looks like it could just get pushed over the edge. It's a nice-looking house, but again, the aesthetics are kind of wonky, in my subjective opinion. I do want to also say that I didn't have a lot of public input on this, but I did confer with almost everyone on staff at some point. I showed them a picture, got ideas of what we thought looked okay. And I was also given this as kind of an example of something to look at, where slopes down from the road, in this case, you can drive onto the roof. And this is a one-story home, even though it's quite large. So we looked at all kinds of pictures of houses with cantilevers. Staff, and I took surveys. This is actually that house that we were given as kind of an idea of a cantilever to look at. We found other pictures from different perspectives of that house. And what we found pretty consistently was the ratio of the height of the house to the height of the area under the house seemed to be generally appealing. Again, this is subjective. Here's another one, one-story house. The area underneath is about the same. So when you go back and you look at this one, the ratios are kind of off. Same with that. So... This is what we have proposed in front of you right now. The proposal is average slope going down from the road, 30 percent or greater. Now you can look at doing the cantilever design. You can pull it up within 10 feet from the road, the front property line there. It can be a maximum 12 feet above the height of the curb. It can be a maximum 24-foot wall plane. And at no point underneath can the distance between the soffit, the underside of the building, and the grade underneath be more than 24 feet. We had kind of toyed with that idea about this ratio and having this area underneath the soffit be equal to, but no greater than the area, the wall plane, the height of the wall plane above it, to keep that ratio. Then you start getting into over-regulating creativity. So we took that element out. So here's looking at that height above, 12 feet above grade. That's about what that is there, showing right here. And same with this one here. It's a little askew, but it is about that much. It's about 12 feet above grade. Now you can drive onto the roof or walk into your house from the road. That area underneath, what we have written now is you can have 10, I'm sorry, 12 feet above grade. You can pull it out so that you can have 24 feet underneath, which, as written, can kind of end up looking like that. So there's this push and pull of trying to constrain things ending up looking like this while allowing for creativity. And we don't have a design review board. So when we're looking at writing these kinds of things, we have to take these considerations into account. And it's really hard. It's hard to draft a regulation that takes every possibility into account. Today, I had a gentleman call with questions about this, and his property sloped down and it had a dip. And he just wants the cantilever over the dip. Or if the road is, you know, going down and this goes down, but at an angle. Like, there's so many different ways that this could happen. Trying to capture all of that within a regulation, that's why we're asking for your input. So this map was made today in response to requests for where things are located in HOAs and the NPOA versus not. We've done a lot more tweaking with our data. We have 100 and, I'm sorry, 895 total single-family residential vacant lots left here in town. To get this number, we took out State Trust Land. That hasn't been platted for lots. How many lots that's going to bring in? I don't know, a thousand some. And then we also took out Adaro Canyon because those are semi-custom. They have product models that they bring to us, and none of them have ever been cantilever. And they're doing mass grading, so it's probably pretty safe to say that none of them will be cantilever. So we took those out of the equation, came up with this, 895. 52 of those lots are not within any HOA or the NPOA. I then did a visual inspection with Ken Valverde. He is JIS technician and CAD technician. And we went and we looked in at every single one of those lots, and less than 10 of them have this 30 percent grade or more. That brings me to the next map. So we tried to do a very basic slope analysis to see where these lots with 30 percent grade or more are located in town. When we did this analysis last summer, the, we, these are the, where we got our data from, when we started doing this data analysis. So there's some reputable names up there. We didn't just make the data up ourselves. We used pixels that were 20-meter resolution. And using that and using a statistical analysis methodology of if there was any point on that lot that one of those pixels had a grade of 30 percent or greater, that whole lot was considered to have 30 percent or greater. I didn't know exactly that that's how that MAG had done the analysis. So we redid it this year with 10-meter pixels. And I asked them to do two analyses with the pixels averaged over the whole lot and the pixels averaged within 100 feet of the road, because it's kind of where people are going to build. When we look at that, only 48 of the 895 lots have a slope of 30 percent or greater when you average it over the whole lot. And 28, when you average it within 100 feet of the road. 28 meet that 30 percent or more. So it's relatively few lots, I guess, is the point of this. And there are considerably more that meet that 20 percent or more.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine has a question.
Excuse me, I, yeah, this is a little complicated. I want to make sure I understand it. There were 28 lots that would... Will you repeat that, what the 28 is?
Right. So when we looked at the slopes on each lot, they were deter, the slope was determined on a pixel-by-pixel basis, and each pixel was 100 square meters. And when you look at the area between the road, the front property line, and 100 feet in, when you average that, that's where we get this number from. So the properties that had an average slope of 30 percent or more from the road, 100 feet in, there were 28 of those, of the 895 in town.
Glad you understand.
I know.
Thank you.
You got that, right?
Oh, sure.
Repeat it.
I don't mean to bore you, but I do want to let you know, like, I think it's important to know, like, how much this is going to impact the town and where it's going to impact the town. Because again, it's aesthetics, it's design.
So Marissa, just for clarification, so you're looking at topography, looking at a geographic information system?
Yes.
And so a pixel, a lot of people know what a pixel is, but a pixel is like that little dot on your screen. And so what you're saying is, in the past, I guess last year, the pixel you had used 20, and now you got really into finer detail.
Correct.
So it was 10. And so it was 100 square feet, 10 by 10 was each pixel, correct?
Correct.
So you're able to really drill down a lot more details than what you were able to do a year ago?
Right. I do want to put this caveat out, though. We can give these kind of numbers because they're averages. But if you say, like, what's that lot right there? You're going to have to come in and do a slope analysis. I'm not going to be able to have any one person come in and say, oh, does my lot qualify? You're going to have to do a slope analysis for each lot.
Mayor, if I may, just a...
Sure, Councilman.
Marissa, just a point of clarification. You mentioned that 895 lots and 52 of those are outside of HOA or NPOA. Is that 52 out of the 895?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And less than 10 of those were, had any portion of that lot that had a pixel that was red. I didn't get to this little map yet, but what this map is, I had MAG make a map for me. And I just want to shout out to them and Ken because they've done so much to help me. They've dropped a lot of their work to try and get this stuff ready for us. And they've done a really good job.
And you've done a great job too, and I appreciate the extra work and working these numbers up. As I mentioned before, my concern would be, those are 52 lots. It could be one lot, it could be two lots, that don't have design standards.
Correct.
So that's a concern of mine. We'll address that as we move on.
Okay. This map, I had them look at, I believe this map was done, actually, I know this map was done, using 10-meter pixels, and the resolution is 10 meters. When you look at a property, I'm sorry, when you look at a pixel, they determined what the slope of that pixel was. I didn't get into the methodology for how they determined that because it had all the other data layers involved. You want that info, I can get it for you. And they made this map. So if the slope is less than 10 percent, it's in blue. 10 percent to 20 percent slope is green. 20 to 30 is yellow, and then 30 or more is red. So you get this heat map, which is kind of a cool-looking, cool-looking map, if you ask me. And then all of the vacant, single-family residential parcels are outlined in red. And they actually provided this online for us. So if anyone wants to, like, go poke around, I have the link for it. It's kind of cool. I looked at where there was a concentration of these slopes of 30 percent or more. There's Fire Rock, Crestview, Eagle's Nest, Sycamore Drive and Gray, Stone Drive. And there's some up in the State Trust Land. All of these have HOAs design standards. State Trust Land hasn't been platted for individual lots. But I believe what I've seen is this area, these areas here that have the very steep lots are put into open space anyway. Could it happen up there? Possibly, because we don't have a final product for up there. Adaro Canyon, like I said, we took that out. They're doing mass grading. It's really not going to be relative to this ordinance. Here's the web link if you guys want to see it. So in conclusion of my presentation, what we're looking at is a balance of being able to have creativity and also maintaining the aesthetics and character of our community. We do not have design review at the town level. We don't have a design review board. HOAs and NPOA may. This is a new idea, so it probably is not addressed specifically right now. Will they change their regulations? I don't know. You know, that's really up to them. As we pointed out, the ones that aren't in an HOA or NPOA would have no design review, and staff is requesting direction. When we took it to the P&amp;Z commission, they requested that, they moved, they requested, I'm sorry, they recommended that council approve it, but they wanted you guys to take into consideration a couple of things. Create a design review criteria and parameters for possibly having maximum slope allowed to be developed. Limiting visual mass, so that would be how big the building looks from the other side, as opposed to kind of terracing it up, which breaks up the facade and how it physically looks on the mountainside. Eliminate to just a one-story building, requiring the soffit under... Requiring the soffit under it to be finished. And I'm gonna show you a picture on that really quick. And then, consider possible legal issues with any kind of engineering, design issues. But that would, it would go through building and engineering in the review anyway. Wanted to point out, okay, so, the underside of this does not have a finished soffit, per se, but generally, it looks okay. And this does have a finished soffit. So, saying it needs to be finished, again, it's objective, you know, what looks okay or not. I believe, I've also recommended doing some landscaping in this, this image. They have trees. We're not gonna have trees like that. They just don't grow like that here in town. Some boulders.
Okay. Considering that we may have to ask our attorney for some legal advice, I really should introduce him. And I apologize for not doing that sooner. And I can always count on my fellow council people to remind me of something that I forgot. Our new attorney is here with us today, Aaron Aronson.
Yeah, Aaron Aronson, pleasure to meet you, Mayor. Or to be introduced, Mayor, thank you very much, Council. It's a pleasure to be serving the town. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, let's go to questions. Questions for Marissa, if you understood which, all that that she said, and you have a question. Councilman Magazine.
No, I did not understand everything she said.
You wanted her to repeat it?
No. Pardon my ignorance or lack of memory, but how did this come about in the first place?
I believe, if I understand correctly, it was discussed at a council retreat. I was not at the retreat, I'm, you know, a couple of levels down, but that's what I understand from Grady, and Bob Rogers, my director.
Maybe-
I think that Councilman Brown can answer that question.
That'd be fine, but one other question before we go on. Are these lots, at least the twenty-eight, are they privately owned lots?
Yes.
And do we have any understanding, maybe Councilman Brown can tell me, what the expectation was when people bought the lots in the first place?
Love to, Alan. So, here's a little history on where this came from. A local builder, a friend of mine, John Fontaine, who's been building in Fountain Hills for, since the seventies, probably the longest-tenured active builder in Fountain Hills, came to me a year and a half ago now with the idea of being able to build on what is now non-buildable. And let me explain what makes it non-buildable. These lots were originally sold under the county ordinances. And when the town became a town and brought our own ordinances into the law, these lots became non-buildable. And you can't build enough retaining walls fast enough to get a house on it. So, this, he came to me and said, "Well, here's a sensible solution. Let's be bright about using these non-buildable lots, and let's do a little cantilever structure on it." Which I've, it's a long ways off from the gun turrets that we've been looking at on the screen. But here's the history. The county, they were sold under the county ordinances, and Crestview Estates is still being built under the county ordinances, because all of the lots were sold under the county ordinances, and the development agreement between MCO and Fountain Hills ran out, and we immediately decided we were going to make all of the lots in Crestview build under the new town ordinances. And that would probably cause as large of a lawsuit as anything we've seen yet. So, we last all agreed that we will go ahead and build Crestview out under the ordinances that the lot was sold to. And to my knowledge, that's still the way it is being built out. And if you want to know the difference, all you have to do is drive through Crestview, and you can see the driveways are steeper, the retaining walls are taller, the houses set below the curb further. I mean, it's a totally different, it's a totally different look than what we allow currently in Fountain Hills, proper. And, and we, so we introduced a whole new set of ordinances after they were sold in the county protection. And then, we offer a new hillside protection, which means that if it's, if the lot slopes more than fifteen percent, you can build on ten percent of the lot. If it slopes twenty percent, you can build on five percent. And that, that, in my opinion, is a taking of land, but no one wants to listen to that. And that makes these lots even harder to build on. And then, we introduced the ten-foot cut and fill. And of course, you take a thirty percent slope on a lot and try to put a ten-foot cut or a ten-foot fill on it, and you still can't put a house on it. So, John Fontaine, who I, once again, will say has been here since the seventies building, brought the idea to me and said, "Why don't we make some of these non-buildable lots buildable, so the town can, in fact, you know, pick up the building permits and the fees off of it?" And I said, "Okay, well, let me take this to the council and let me see where we go with it." Well, since this, since this all started, Steve Vargo, who is the owner of MCO Realty and part-owner of Eagle's Nest, called me, and we had a great conversation about it. And he's telling me that a week ago, Eagle's Nest had a board meeting, and they have rewritten their guidelines to allow terrorists retaining walls, which I don't know if it'll meet the town ordinance, but they are doing all they can do, as is Fire Rock, to get away from the multifamily, or the multi-leveled homes, and get more into a single-level home. And I thought it was interesting that Steve called and told me that that's what they had done just last week. So, and I would like to go ahead and make some more comments on what the planning and zoning concerns were. One of the commissioners asked, "What if the house falls down and falls on somebody else's house?" Well, you'll have to be building in the bottom of the wash for that to happen, and then you can't do that. And I thought that was a fairly humorous question. And another comment was, "Well, if it's non-buildable, don't build on it." Well, if you paid your money to own a lot, and the town tells you you can't build on it, should the town buy it back? You know, there's a little thought behind all this. And they also had the same concern about the architectural design, which I totally agree a hundred percent on. And the solution that I think we should have for the architectural review is that we can, we can write some basic guidelines and probably hire the NPOA to actually do the review through our guidelines, even though it's not an NPOA resident, but we can probably ask their reviewing committee to look at it, because they get paid a fee. And if you're in the NPOA and you take a home in to build, you have to pay a fee to them to do the, to do the review. And I'm sure that they would be more than happy to put a fee on a home for the town of Fountain Hills and do a review on it. Now, I haven't talked to them, but I will, if we move forward. And the one-story comment is exactly what we don't want, because if we can do a two-level house on a lot that's falling away quickly enough, you don't see the bottom soffit at all. And once again, I've got, unfortunately, I didn't bring enough to pass around, but here's, here's the design that's in question, and it clearly, clearly, is a good design. I mean, it is a pretty design. And I, I will also say that if you're in Cave Creek and you walk out of Town Hall and you look north of Town Hall, about a half a block, there's a cantilevered house that's about as attractive as you're going to find. So, I mean, as we were going through this, I was doing a little business in Cave Creek and had to smile that right above Town Hall, they've got a cantilevered house. And in conclusion, I say that this is a sensible solution to a problem that nobody has been able to address. And if, if we can work through the architectural review, I think that is a, it will be a win-win for the lot owners and the town of Fountain Hills. Did I answer your question?
You absolutely did. And I'd like to follow up, if I may.
Go ahead.
Other than the potential visual problems, are there any other negatives associated with this?
Typical Fountain Hills question, let's look at the negatives. No. It builds exactly like, it will build exactly like a traditional home, only the engineering will be, that it will be, will be stood up on stilts, quote, "a cantilevered house." But it builds structurally, as the structural engineers design it.
As was pointed out earlier in the presentation, as I recall, there was a photo of one that was not, the soffit was not finished. And if it's, can those be viewed from other residences, potentially? If they can, is there something that can be done in the ordinance to make sure that doesn't happen?
Oh, absolutely. That's why I'm saying we need to spend some time and write some architectural guidelines. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Leger?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. Do all municipalities allow cantilevered homes?
Do they all allow it?
Mm-hmm. There are some that don't allow it, let me put it that way.
The majority of the municipalities that I researched, of course, I'm not all-knowing of everything, and I don't have time to research everything. And one of the things that planners do is they try to go find someone that's already written it, so we can, like, not reinvent the wheel ourselves and kind of copy it. I couldn't find anything that's really spelled out cantilevered development, other than one municipality that actually required it, because there was environmentally sensitive soils, some kind of biological reason where they required it. I know most municipalities require basically what we do, where you have to build into the mountainside. Porches are often cantilevered anyway. There are often elements of a building that are cantilevered, but to the extent of what we're talking about now, I really didn't find anything that was written that allowed it or required it, any more than like what we're talking about tonight.
So, just a simple final question, are there any municipalities that prevent folks from building on slope greater than thirty percent cantilevered-type homes?
I did not find that specifically, but I didn't look for that specifically.
It'd be interesting to know that.
I do-
You're talking about fifty-two lots out of eight hundred and ninety-five lots, which is only five percent. But once again, if I've, most of our infill lots, in most cases, that are sloped, have homes on either side of them, except with the exception of, let's say, Eagle's Nest, Adaro Canyon, and Fire Rock. It would be a concern if someone had gone through all the pain to build within our current guidelines, on the left and on the right, I'm not getting political here, and someone wants to be a moderate and be in the middle and build a home that's cantilevered, that could raise, you're talking about compatibility and aesthetically pleasing and being creative, and I see there's a lot that goes on there. I think some of the stipulations that P&amp;Z put in place makes sense, maybe, you know, the liability one, Dennis, you know, you addressed that. But in terms of covering the soffits, I think in most cantilevered homes that I've seen, the soffits are uncovered, and I think that's the part of it that is not aesthetically pleasing, except if you're in Malibu and you're, those cantilevered homes there in the ocean, which is a whole different environment. I have, you're just looking for direction this evening, right?
Honestly, it's up to council how you wanna move forward, if you wanna give staff direction, if you wanna vote on adopting something that's-
I think what I'm hearing Dennis say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, going back to the drawing board and putting some stipulations in place, that we could come back and take another look at. I'm really concerned about fifty-two properties going forward with existing homes on either side without some type of design review. That, that's what raises my red flags. Whether it was two homes, fifty-two, or a hundred and fifty, fifty-two homes is a lot, and that affects a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of people.
Councilman Brown?
So, I will answer a couple of the questions and thoughts. The very first statement I would make is, how many towns in the United States are built on hillsides like Fountain Hills is? And you're going to find that there are very few built in, on hillsides like Fountain Hills. Now, Paradise Valley, I understand, has an ordinance where you can build cantilevered houses. And, and they do, and-
In the back.
But because it's on the side of a hill?
It's very limited. The cantilever, I believe, can be like eight feet out.
Is this not very limited?
It's even more restrictive than what we're proposing here, actually.
But I'm saying, don't you feel like what we're proposing, what staff is proposing is fairly limited?
Compared to Paradise Valley, no.
Okay.
In general, again, it's very difficult to write design guidelines into code, taking everything into consideration. You want it to be loose enough to allow for the creativity, because the lots are so-
I don't, I don't think anybody in the town of Fountain Hills wants to be loose. We've been working on this for eighteen-plus months, and it's either time, it's, I'm starting to feel a little bit like Judge Kavanaugh. It's time to kind of call the vote and decide whether we're going to let, let this occur. You need to drive up on Sycamore and look off the south side of Sycamore. In fact, just drive up there and take a step off the south side of Sycamore and see if you can stop rolling before you get to the bottom of the wash. Now, these are the type of lots that we're talking about. And on the south side of Sycamore, there are some houses that are built that the driveways are probably twenty-five, twenty-eight percent on, which wouldn't even come close to meeting the ordinances today. And this is what we're dealing with. And I think this is a sensible solution to building on non-buildable lots and put the stipulation on it that, yes, we will stop and write an architectural review code specifically for these houses. But it's time, it's time to put it to bed. It's just another typical deal.
Vice Mayor, toast.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna commend your department and all the work that you've done to do this and to take the suggestions from one of our retreats, which there were many suggestions, but this addresses this issue of property in this town that should be developed. And I know John Fontaine personally, he's an excellent builder, and as is Dennis Brown. These homes are not inexpensive homes. And to design and to have the quality that he builds, I know that it's gonna add value to our community, and I would support moving forward with this as-is.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Mayor, if I may, I'm not opposed to cantilevered homes, and my question about other municipalities was just a matter of curiosity. Of course, Fountain Hills is extremely unique. All I'm trying to understand is, I'm not in a position tonight to say, "Okay, fine, check this off and move it forward." I think that we need to take a look at, as Dennis stated, developing some architectural guideline standards. That's all I'm saying. It's hard for me to vote when there are no standards in place. If you come back to us with standards, then I can make a more responsible vote. I can't responsibly vote tonight where there's fifty-two homes with no architectural standards.
Okay, we have one speaker card. Who do we have?
Bob Shelstrom.
Okay. Bob, come on up.
Yes, I'm Bob Shelstrom, from Fountain Hills. I'm also a professional engineer, I've been licensed in eight states. I got my bachelor's degree in civil engineering, and I've been practicing for about forty years. Amongst my experiences, I've been doing foundation design, including wood piles, sheet piles, steel, caissons drilled, and driven precast concrete piles for very excessive structures. Now, what we're doing here, I have no objection to cantilevered housing. It can be engineered properly, as long as you have the right checks and balances involved. And a lot of them, a lot of times when you're dealing with this, you gotta go beyond the codes, because the codes don't deal with specialized situations. What I've found in all the special structure and foundations I've designed is we always had a professional geotech engineer prepare a report and foundation recommendation. This is stuff I've designed, two-thousand horsepower pumping stations on huge concrete blocks and everything else to make sure your settlement and other problems were properly addressed. I would say, were I on the council, I would require a professional geotech report and a foundation recommendation, a run-and-mill architecture- A run-and-mill architect will not necessarily have this expertise. If you've looked at California, you have problems whenever you get rain and issues here, and we have some of the worst soil most challenged by that, with sand and mostly coliché, which is, of course, you know, like a loose kind of rock. I've done a lot of designs in West Texas, where there's similar kind of situations, and believe me, when you're building on the side of the hill, that is a challenge. There are ways to defeat these challenges, but you gotta make sure you do it properly. So if you go ahead with that kind of approach, where you need, before you do anything for as part of the permit, a geotech report from a qualified professional with a recommendation, I think you can do this well. As far as the things above ground, I agree with Councilmember Brown, you can make them aesthetic. And you have to set those standards for what it looks, because to tell you the truth, gone to California beaches and seen beach houses, and these things are horrendous. When developer gets caught for a cost on something like this, corners get cut. So that's why it's important to have the review and standards. And to tell you the truth, anything that is this precarious, structurally and from a physical point of view, you need a professional review on that to make sure that's done properly. Anyway, outside of that, like I said, I think it's a good thing, but you gotta make sure you do the right precautions. And of course, I'd be happy to talk with you anytime if you'd like some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other speaker cards? Nope? Councilman Magazine, do you have?
I just wanted, wondered if the speaker had, or if Councilman Brown has any idea what the cost is of those kinds of reviews.
Firstly, every new construction that goes in Fountain Hills currently has a geotech report of soils analysis on every new home that's being constructed. And not only would we on, anybody that's going to invest this kind of money in, in this type of a structure will not only hire a geotech, they will also hire a, a soils engineer, like David Deathridge, who is a, who is not only a civil engineer, he's also a, help me, Randy, he's a-
Geotech engineer.
Excuse me?
Geotech engineer.
He's a geotech engineer, and one of the better ones. But right now, all, all of the new homes that are going in Fountain Hills are requiring a soils analysis be turned in with the original cemental. So, the boys in town hall have that covered.
Okay. Number speaker cards? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of Ordinance eighteen-dash-eleven, a proposed text amendment to Section one-point-twelve, Section five-point-ten-A, Section five-point-ten-B, Section ten-point-nine, and the addition of Section five-point-ten-C, and the Town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance to provide development standards for utilizing cantilevers on single-family residential lots or parcels with slopes equal to or greater than thirty percent, and that is case number Z two thousand and eighteen dash zero-three. Any further council discussion?
Just a point of clarification, Dennis, you had mentioned the possibility of going to NPOA and ask if they would be on board in doing design reviews. Is that, is that part of, going to be part of the motion?
That will, that will be part of the motion, yeah.
And also, there were some stipulations from P and Z. Are there any stipulations in there you feel comfortable with? Not the liability one, but the soffits?
That will be part of, that will be part of the architectural guidelines.
Okay.
That will, and, and the way I will, would like to present this, would be that no permit is to be released until we actually have a set of architectural guidelines in place, and the NPOA in place to do the reviews.
And if you could include that in the motion, I could certainly support it.
I, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Brown, would you like to make the motion?
Certainly, thank you. I move to approve whatever we're on here.
All of that.
I, I approve all, I move to approve all of that with the stipulations, that none, note, there will not be any permits released until we have a set of guidelines, architectural guidelines in place for cantilevered residents, and, what was the other one?
Soffits.
Yeah, well, that's in the architectural guidelines.
One-story?
No, that, we don't want to do the one-story, and have, and have the NPOA in place to do the reviews.
Soffits.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Councilman Magazine?
I just want to thank Councilman Brown, because this was a heck of a lot of work, and very technical, and I appreciate what he's done.
Well, staff, staff also, staff also has done a great job on this. Don't, don't think for a second that, I would have found some better-looking houses than the gun turrets, but-
I wanted to show the options on both ends of the spectrum.
And, and the other thing you need to realize, you're at the bottom looking up at almost every structure that you're seeing here, and you would have to be in the bottom of a wash in Fountain Hills to see any part of that soffit.
I think, because I did talk about that with Randy, because I was curious, because that's what I thought, and I think there were a couple areas of town, primarily like in the north middle, remember we talked about where the house, you'd be able to see the bottom of the house below? There are a couple areas in town.
You'd actually be building on the uphill side of the street?
If you build on the downhill side, there, there are houses down here, too. They're, they're not a lot, but it does happen.
Okay. All right, let's go on. For items eight-D and eight-E, there will be one staff report. Public input for eight-E is taken during eight-D. Public hearing to receive comments on Ordinance eighteen-dash-twelve, a proposed text amendment to the Town of Fountain Hills subdivision ordinance, Article five, Section five-point-two, and Section five-point-four, to remove the requirements for six-foot-tall chain-link fencing to delineate the disturbance limit boundaries and to allow rope and flag to be used to delineate the disturbance limit boundaries. This is case number S two thousand and eighteen dash oh-four. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Grady, did you want to start?
Thank you. Our senior planner, Marissa Moore, will give a staff report on this particular item.
Okay, Marissa.
Hello. Okay, I don't have a presentation, other than just explaining, right now, on lots that have a slope of twenty percent or more, there's hillside disturbance boundary limits, and we require a six-foot-tall fence to be put at that boundary. This proposal is to remove the requirement for a six-foot-tall fence and instead put stakes with rope and flag. They'd still have to be surveyed in, they'd still have to remain in place, you can't disturb outside of it. It's just a little bit easier to install, and a little safer, as I'm sure Dennis Brown can attest to, because he's familiar with this. And it is a little bit of cost-saving to the developers and homeowners.
Questions from council? Speaker cards? No? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of Ordinance eighteen-dash-twelve, a proposed text amendment to the Town of Fountain Hills subdivision ordinance, Article five, Section five-point-two, and Section five-point-four, to remove the requirements for a six-foot-tall chain-link fencing to delineate the disturbance limit boundaries and to allow rope and flag to be used to delineate the disturbance limit boundaries. This is case number S two thousand and eighteen dash zero-four. Any other council discussion?
I'd be glad to explain it.
Okay.
This, this, too, was brought to me by builders that are not only building in Fountain Hills, but also building Cave Creek, Carefree, Gilbert, Mesa, Chandler, because the towns don't require the six-foot fence, and even in Scottsdale, North Scottsdale, when you drive by the, the larger, the larger homes that are being constructed, you will find that the disturbance boundary is set with a, with a steel stake and a yellow rope with signs on it, that same signage that we use, you know, stay out of the open space. And part of the, part of the issue in Fountain Hills is, it's hard to believe, but the ground's really hard, and you go out and try to stand these six-foot fences up with, with the two-inch steel post, and you get on the hillside that's twenty percent, and you can't get the stake in the ground, and then your fence blows over, and then you're up there trying to prop the fence up, and, you know, it, it just, it doesn't make sense. Now, the HOAs have all the ability in the world, like if Fire Rock wanted to leave in their architectural guidelines a requirement for a six-foot fence, that's fine. Every HOA has that option, but from, from a builder's standpoint, it really doesn't make sense to have a six-foot fence. I know we had the conversation about, well, it's so much easier to move the rope and, and take a little more of the disturbance. Well, surprise, surprise, the builders figured out years ago, you just move the surveyor stake three feet and pick up three more feet, too. I mean, it's, it's, it's a game that, once again, is sadly played, so we have room to build, build the homes that we're building. And besides that, all the disturbed areas gets revegetated, and I've heard comments about it's less money and it's going to save the developer or the owners some money, and what's wrong with that? I don't see anything wrong with saving a little money. You know, it's cost, by the time you get a, just, just the basic requirements for a permit, you've got about twenty-eight thousand, thirty thousand dollars on a, on a three-thousand-square-foot house, just in putting your fence up, buying the stormwater permit, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's all right if we save a little bit of money for the homeowners. But I, too, I would, I would like to move this along as well.
Okay. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I move to approve.
Mayor, I had a quick, quick comment, if I may.
Okay, I was just going to get the motion on first.
Oh, sorry.
He was in the middle of it.
I move to approve Ordinance eighteen-dash-twelve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, council discussion.
Thank you, thank you. There's some irony here. When I had a house built, putting the disturbance fence in, they disturbed my non-disturbance area.
No.
And I've seen it happen on many, many occasions, dragging that chain-link fence through the desert, pulling it back through the desert, so this is definitely something I could be in favor of.
My disturbance fence got blown down the first storm. We've all got those stories. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving along, consideration of authorization to the town manager to sign a cooperative purchase agreement, CPA number two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-eight, with game time and the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for purchase of playground equipment in conjunction with the Four Peaks Park improvements. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you recall, in our capital improvement program for this year, council authorized funding for rehabilitation of the Four Peaks Park improvements, which includes this item before you tonight. Our community services director, Rachel Goodwin, is going to give you a brief synopsis of what this entails, and I think you're going to be pleased with it.
Thank you, Grady. I thank you. I am here tonight to follow up on a grant item. A couple of weeks ago, I came forward to request your permission to apply for a grant through Game Time, if you recall. We are pleased to have been awarded in a grant through the, that process. It averages roughly around thirty thousand dollars. It is a matching grant, so what we are looking at purchasing is roughly a hundred-and-six-thousand dollars worth of equipment at a cost of roughly eighty-four thousand. So, that is our discounted rate through this grant process. What I'd like to do is give you a quick overview of what it is we're looking to do with this, and then the motion is, we're in a bit of a time crunch to get this executed. Part of this grant is that the purchase needs to be made by the end of October. So, we are doing this presentation in tandem with our legal proceedings to make sure that we have our contract ready to go. So, what we're asking for is authorization for the town manager to sign this contract, which is outside his normal scope.
Okay.
So, with that. All right, as we talked about, this is for the Four Peaks Park playground renovations. This is specific to the two-to-five-year-old play space. So where are we talking? This is over on the, I guess this is the eastern portion of the park, where the existing basketball courts are, where the former bus barn is, kind of behind EBIT, if everyone is familiar with where I'm talking, it's in the area here in red. What we've done is, this is the same area, just a different view of it. We are talking about the play space next to the, we'll call the yellow box. That is the two-to-five-year-old play space over there. The area below the yellow box is considered the playground space. The yellow represents where we would like to have some covered ramada space. And then, on the other side, we'd like to have a dedicated sand space for diggers and other things. When we removed the sand from other parks, we did get some community feedback that the little ones do like to have space to dig and play. So we'd like to work that into this layout. What we're, so what we're focusing on is the actual play space, the play element, so just to the bottom of the yellow square there. This is a rendering of what it is we'd like to purchase with this grant. This is one view of it. There is an alternate view, you can see it, it has a number of slides, climbing elements, it does have some shade built into the structure. From the other view, it does have what we like to call a American Ninja Warrior-type feel. It has kind of the obstacle course setting to where kids can climb and maneuver through and over and under different types of elements. So, this is the overall footprint of the space. You can see, it is actually quite large, it will fill the space, it will give quite a bit of activity in the space. What we would like to do is utilize this grant to purchase these items, and then if we find that we do have savings through this, through this process later down the road as we continue the renovation, if we do have some savings elsewhere, or other funding secured through outside sources, we would like to add a few additional elements, what we call ride-ons, given an idea of what else we would like to add, if we have the means available. So these would be additional items later down the road, if, if at all possible. And that does include the sand diggers. So, with your permission tonight, we would like to move forward with acceptance of the grant and the purchase of these materials.
First of all, I want to congratulate you, because you do an awesome job when applying for grants.
Thank you.
And I am just so excited that we are going to finally, finally renovate Four Peaks Park, our one park where we have more families and more kids than any part of town, and this hopefully is just the beginning of redoing our park, right? Councilman DePorter?
I totally agree. My kids will be over the age limit by that time, but that's-
I know, mine are, too.
But, I just echo the mayor, your grant writing abilities and your ability to secure these, so that we can maximize our dollars is awesome. So, thank you for thinking of the forgotten park on that side of town and continuing to do that.
Our team is very excited about this, and our team is actually all contributing to this process through ideas and suggestions and writing as well, so it's definitely a team effort.
But you're a great leader, so, thank you. Any other council, Councilman Leger?
Timeline?
The operation of this would be, we would like to, we're working with Legal Now to get the documents back. The purchase would be made by the end of October. Receipt would be probably within, before the end of the year is when we would receive the materials. They likely would not be, the site would not be ready for installation probably until mid-spring, because we are working in tandem to get the site prep in terms. Right now, we have a basketball court there, we have a sand volleyball court there, we have a number of things we'll have to get into place, including some concrete work, as well as film material and things like that. So, ideally, the ideal situation would be to have this in place and ready for activity in, I'd like to say mid-spring, before it gets too hot, so that the kids can take advantage of it. But obviously, there's a number of factors that involve that and impact that.
Okay. Speaker cards? Okay, go for it.
I would like to move to authorize the town manager to sign a cooperative purchasing agreement with Game Time in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of playground equipment in conjunction with the Four Peaks Park improvements.
Second.
All right, motion in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Consideration of approving an amendment to the professional services agreement with Brown and Associates to increase the fiscal year eighteen-nineteen contract, see two thousand and nineteen dash zero-zero-two-point-one, by forty-five thousand to cover the cost of on-call plan review and inspections through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you is a contract amendment where we're trying to increase the funding for Brown and Associates. Brown and Associates is the firm that does a lot of our outside contracting to do plan review and inspections. As you're aware, we do not have much more in the way of staffing, other than our chief building official, who is here before you tonight. This is to increase the amount from fifteen thousand dollars that we currently have approved to an additional forty-five thousand for a total of sixty thousand, which is what is exactly to the dollar and to the penny in the budget for this year. We have Peter Johnson, our chief building official, here if you have any questions about this item.
Questions for Peter? Oh, yes, Councilman Brown.
Hi, Peter, is that enough?
Well, for now.
Will, will it get us through the year?
It's hard to say. You know, the amount of time that we utilize Brown and Associates is limited right now. If the activity increases, you know, it may not last the whole year. My intention is to make it last.
I know your intent... Your intentions are extremely good. I just, just asking for future reference, are we, are we, do we need to start looking for some, some more money?
So I'll, I'll jump in on this. Councilmember Dennis, the staff has brought to my attention, they believe that this probably is gonna get us by for a number of months, but we're gonna probably have to come back. And we will probably be doing a request for a transfer that we'll be bringing to you at a later time, but it's probably, I think we're at least good for six months here, based on what I understand.
And if I may, if I may, so if, if we're willing to have this kind of activity and it continues to pick up like it has over the last two years, have we even considered truly bringing on yet a, a second inspector?
We've talked about that. In fact, your timing is interesting, because we, we just had a conversation about this two weeks ago. And one of the things I've asked the staff to do is start producing a report that you're familiar with that shows workload in various different areas. And then the other thing that I'm asking for, I believe it's about time for us, and you're not gonna be happy with this probably, but I think it's about time for us to look at maybe a permit fee study to see where we are, because it's been a number of years since we last adjusted fees. So I first asked staff to see how we compare to other comparable cities around the valley, because I think we are probably not keeping up with what the actual cost of delivering the service is.
Highest in the valley.
So we're gonna, we're gonna verify and validate and see if that is still the case. But anyways, that's gonna be all part of the equation, because as you're aware, we're, you know, to be able to fund a position, we're gonna have to have revenues to support it.
I understand. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, anything further? You have a, you have a speaker card?
Speaker card from Bob Shelstrom.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Bob Shelstrom from Fountain Hills. In my past professional life, I was certified for the city of Chicago as a code review planner for structural, mechanical, and plumbing work, and I've been certified as a professional conservation engineer. So I've looked at a lot of these things, and one of the things I had a question about, and perhaps you've covered it, is there is a rubric usually set up, a scale, for the amount you should be spending on inspections and plan reviews. It's a sliding scale where there's a higher percentage of the construction cost at, you know, for the smaller projects, and of course, it goes up to other levels as it gets bigger, a smaller percentage. One of the things that troubled me when I was convalescing recently, I took a look at some of the inspection and plan review fees I saw for Park Place. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I saw a contract for $265,000 on it. I understand our fee was somewhere in the area of $400,000. And not only that, they used the basis of seventy-five percent of our fee as what they would have for that number. Now, those numbers seem very high for the services provided, and that doesn't mean that there's a cheaper way to do it or not, but the bottom line is, you have to have some sort of standard for it, percentage of construction cost. There's a lot of towns doing it, find out who does it, who has the best one and most effective. The other way is, of course, time and material, which I assume this contract is, perhaps not. But in those cases, what you say is, you will provide certain personnel up to certain hours and be able to draw against that, as opposed to saying, there's this one property, this is what you need for, you're gonna get for inspections, and this is what you're gonna get for plan review. They're kind of separate things, but to tell you the truth, when I saw that we only probably had $100,000, $150,000 from the Park Place fee for taking care of all the issues, like the roads and everything else that were damaged, and other services, hookups to sewers, that sort of thing, if I'm understanding it correctly, we're losing money on that deal. So I agree with the mayor's idea that we have to review our fees, but before we do that, I think we have to get together and be able to figure out for the community what the right numbers for that should be. And just because we budget it doesn't mean it's prudent. So I would hope that you guys will ask some questions, and it's just a matter of development process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. No more council discussion, no more speaker cards, so just a motion?
I move to appoint, oh...
You moved to?
We're still trying to get through them.
Approve?
Yeah, approve. The $45,000 transfer.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we go on to, Atrius, just consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy on the council. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to thank all, first of all, all the eleven who applied for the seat, and also, I want to thank the five who were chosen for consideration, who withstood all of our questions, and thank you all for your great interest in serving on this council. With that, I will open it up for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move to appoint Sherri LaCrone to the vacant council seat for the remaining term.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any council discussion, speaker cards? Then I will call for a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tullis?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Sherri LaCrone, who was with us today. Congratulations, you will be, next meeting, you will be sworn in. Congratulations. Okay?
If we could give her a hand.
Is, would you like, any, would you like to say something? I don't want to put you on the spot, but you gotta come up to the mic, though. At least let everybody see who you are.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I appreciate your faith in me and my skills. I look forward to serving the residents of town of Fountain Hills. I enjoyed my service when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for four years. I find myself at a point in time in my life where I can dedicate a lot more time to the town, and I do find it an honor. I'm, I feel privileged, first of all, to live in this town and now to serve its residents. So I look forward to starting my service, and again, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sherri. Okay. And the last item is, we have no, no direction to town manager summary. Anybody has anything else to say except that Make a Difference Day is coming up, and if you haven't signed up, Heather Ware is looking for you. We need some more people to sign up for Make a Difference Day. Last year, I think we had 200 people, so we can always use more, we got lots of projects. Please sign up. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
And a second? All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.